Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now three o'clock in the afternoon. Time and place for the Board of Supervisors to convene for a closed session. Counsel, do we have need for session at this time?
We do. Items F, G, and I are being polled. Items A and B will be heard tonight. And items C, D, E, H, J, and K will be held now at 3:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you very much. We will adjourn at this time to closed session. Good evening. Now that my fifth colleague has joined the Board on time, it is seven o'clock. This is the time and place for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led this evening by Supervisor Shucklian.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we will now take up item number two on our agenda this evening, and that is Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will look immediately to my right Supervisor Shucklian.
First off.
First off.
Kyler, were you in my chair? It's like really low. I feel like you right now.
I was, actually.
Were you? I sat down. I'm like, Ben, where is everybody?
And Deanne had mine way up here.
Actually, it should be higher if you were sitting in it.
No, I like being low.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few things over this last week since our last meeting. And I'll let my colleagues talk a little bit more about this, but we had the very successful groundbreaking for Betty Drive. Also, last week, I attended the Homeless Alliance Heroes Luncheon here in the city of Visalia. Last Friday was my San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting, also known as the Amtrak Committee. And things are moving right along for the express train that's going to be going from Fresno to Sacramento. We're looking at starting that in January, possibly sooner, but January for sure. And that's a train that will leave from Fresno in the morning and get folks into Sacramento by 8:00 A.M., so we're very excited about that.
Paul?
Yes. And what's that, Mike? It won't wreck, unless you're driving, but. And then last Thursday, I think it was, it was very early in the morning, I had the opportunity to be interviewed by Kope on KMPH, and actually, they were throughout the city of Visalia. And he was at Moonee Grove Park all morning long, doing different interviews about the park. He interviewed Mayor Goobler with the city of Visalia, and some other folks, and I just think it was a nice highlight for Moonee Grove Park, which we will be talking about later, along with all of our parks. And Thursday night, I will be attending the city of Visalia, or the Visalia Chamber of Commerce Awards. And then one other thing that I have is tonight, I'd like to step down and give a little recognition.
Absolutely.
Okay. So if I could have Jim, or Brian Poth, Nick Vargas, step forward, and I'll start talking while you gentlemen are working your way up here. What's that? Come around here, gentlemen. They unlocked the door for you. You're safe. So I just want to share with the group tonight that in May of 2016, after only a few months of organizing and fundraising, the local LGBT community, which is a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community, led by founders Brian Poth and Nick Vargas, opened the doors to the area's first LGBT center in downtown Visalia. In the years since, the city, the center has held community meetings, provided training sessions to local government agencies, Tulare County Sheriff's Office for one, to educate them on how they can better serve the LGBT community. They have tabled at numerous public events and welcomed over a thousand visitors to the downtown center. And just this last month, they celebrated their first year anniversary. And I know a lot of times, it's like, well, one year, you know, we celebrate, we've marked 50th anniversaries of businesses, or 100th anniversaries of businesses. But I think for an organization and a center like The Source, and what they've done for our community, pretty much trailblazing for the LGBT community, I think a one-year anniversary is very special, and they should be recognized. So I have this proclamation, signed by myself. Hopefully, in the future, we'll have one signed by the whole Board. Whereas, The Source is the only LGBT center in Tulare County and is celebrating its one year anniversary. It has served thousands of Tulare County residents by providing resources, recommendations, referrals, and education services to citizens and organizations. The Source LGBT Center has partnered with high school and college gay-straight alliances to deliver such resources, and has also provided training to public agencies, such as the Tulare County Sheriff's Office. Since its inception, the center has held community meetings, provided training sessions to local government agencies to educate them on how they can better serve the LGBT community, tabled at numerous public events, and welcomed over a thousand visitors to the center. Driven by demand for its services, the LGBT Source Center has recently doubled its community's center size. Recently, they did another re-ribbon cutting for that. So it's my honor to recognize, as I say, these trailblazing gentlemen in our community, and the Source LGBT Center on its one-year anniversary, and recognize the month of June 2017 as LGBT Pride Month in Tulare County.
I don't know if I can do it. We just want to thank you so much for, first of all, thank Jim Reeves for all the work he does for us, and what goes into a proclamation. Thank you for signing it. It means the world to us, you know. I am a crier, and this is really emotional for us. It's really great. We've been so well-received by the city of Visalia and the county of Tulare. You know, I know it was mentioned a couple of times that we received over a thousand visitors. The number's actually 2,000.
Sorry?
No, it's okay. But it's, we had no idea that there would be such a need in the community. And we're busier than you can imagine, and we just wanted to say thank you. We want to invite you out to Pride Visalia, which will be the first time The Source is hosting a pride. It's downtown on June 24th. You have, you're all invited. Tickets are free for you.
They'll be there, yeah.
But we just want to thank the community that's been so welcoming to us. I grew up here. I moved away. I moved back. I never thought I'd end up here again. And I'm really glad I did. And I'm really glad we met you. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to thank, I'd also like to thank Chairman Vanderpool for working with me also to make this happen. Thank you.
One, two, three. All right, next we'll hear from Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, there's quite a bit of things going on the last couple of weeks, but I think just to highlight a few, one of the committees that was initially assigned to me, the Exeter, the city of Exeter, their RDA Oversight Committee, we met, for myself, it was for the first time, and it was also for the last time. We met, and we had one item to dissolve the committee, and so that's one less committee that I serve on. So that was, that was very nice. It was a great meeting, and it lasted all five minutes. They knew they didn't want my participation in there, I think, so they wrapped things up. The other thing last week that was of great significance was, and we've got a public hearing that's talking about GSAs, but the East Keweeah Ground Sustainability Agency approved a map that doesn't have any overlap, and I know I kind of announced that we were real close. Well, we finally got there. And so it was something that I've been working on, and staff has been working on for longer than I have. But for the last five months, that was one of the first things that I've had to deal with, and it was a, it was a great milestone that we, that we made, and we were able to work with a lot of different parties, the city of Woodlake, the city of Exeter, various irrigation districts, and water companies. And it was, it was a great success, where I think that all parties, it's not a perfect system, but it's something that all parties came to agreement with. So it was, it was something that was, it was a great relief. And now on to the next challenge. So it's, you know, you solve one, and there's another one that's right behind. And last night, we had a Three Rivers Town Hall meeting, and one of our speakers was the general manager for Lake Keweeah. And if you go up there, it is just about full. There's 179,000 acre feet there. It's at, it will be at capacity, at 185,000 acre feet. They're anticipating between June 18th and 25th for that period. That's when they're anticipating reaching the high-water mark. So that's, it's great, it's a great opportunity to boat and to recreate. And there were a lot of people, as I was going up and coming down, that were fishing and enjoying the lake from the little bit of, of land that's around the lake. It's not nearly what it is before, but it's wonderful that we'll be able to have that resource for a long period of time. With that, I, I'll also be attending the Visalia Chambers Annual Awards Thursday night with Supervisor Shucklian. And what's that?
Sit with me?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind.
We'll bring a booster seat.
Yeah, phone book. I'll bring my own phone book. And then, and then I just, for the sake of Supervisor Ennis, you know, I was in Nashville, and so I got this little.
On the road again.
William Nelson, on the road again. Well, there you go. There you have it. That was all for you.
That's the most hair Mike has had since like the 60s.
Well, that's all for you. And it was a great time. I highly recommend it. A lot of great history there, so.
Thank you for the vacation report, you know. That was rather entertaining. The first time I've ever had that kind of report since I've been on the Board for nine years.
Well, I had to fit in how "on the road again" was going to be, you know.
Next up, I'll call on Supervisor Nelson, I mean Ennis.
Well, thank you, Pete. You know, when I was your age, you had a lot of hair, too. So you've got something to look forward to. Last Friday, they had the Green Power Bus Company broke ground in Porterville, and of course, Porterville will be receiving 10 buses from that plant, and hopefully, they'll get more orders throughout the state. I know the Air Board is pitching money in to pay for these buses, so anything we can do. I know the difference between when we went from diesel to CNG, how much better the air was, especially if you were out walking. Gee, those buses would go by you before, and you had to stop and go in the bushes or something to catch your breath. But no, anything we can do to improve the air. So we're very pleased to have that company in Porterville. I wasn't able to be there. I think Supervisor Worthley went in my place. I was over in King City. I had two granddaughters, one graduating from grammar school, and the other one graduating from King City High School. So that's why I wasn't able to attend that meeting. As we speak, they are sandbagging the spillway at Success Dam. Thank goodness for that. The Corps finally made up their mind. The lake was right at the brink of going over the spillway, and we didn't want to have to release unless we had to, because we've got so much Friant water this year. Friant's about ready to go over the top of the dam, that let's use that Friant water, let's save our Tully River water for later on in the summer. And so we figure we can go from 82.5 up to almost 100,000 acre feet by sandbagging the spillway. So that's just extra water we'll have to run through the summer. Friday, I'll be going out to my old grammar school, Terrabella. They always invite me out for the last day of school, and we have lunch out there, and it's always good to go back to the community and be a part of that celebration, too. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Short week last week, but a very busy one. I had a meeting up in Fresno on Wednesday. I've been requested by the supervisors from Fresno County to attend with a trip to Washington, D.C., specifically aimed at Temperance Flat, and so I'll be doing that later on this month, I believe. And then the following day was in Fresno again for a luncheon, which Senator Feinstein spoke at, giving me an opportunity to interact with her to a short, to a small degree about Temperance Flat, if you can see a common thread here. In the afternoon, I was up at Three Rivers. I was an ad hoc committee from the LAFCO, meeting with the Memorial District, their Cemetery District Board, I'm sorry, up there, and about their financial situation, how things were going. And then I was, as Mike said, at the Green Bus Groundbreaking Ceremony in Porterville on Friday. This morning, we had an ad hoc finance committee meeting, which was a very interesting meeting, looking at our retirement system and various options of how we might improve upon that system. We're a well-funded system, but at the same time, our unfunded liability at this point is about $230 million. And so as that continues to grow, the county has to be concerned about how we're going to meet those obligations, because the unfunded portion of the retirement is 100% responsibility of the county government, and so we are the ones who have to bear those costs. So that was a very good meeting. Tomorrow, we'll be having a Tree Mortality Task Force meeting here. We've done a great job of getting trees down that are in danger of falling on our county roads up in the mountains, but obviously, there's much more work that needs to be done. So that's what I have for today.
All right. Thank you very much, Supervisor. So first of all, I had a great occasion this morning, where I was able to present a proclamation along with several of my fellow elected colleagues, one from, obviously, the sheriff. There's not two sheriffs, there's one sheriff, and one from the District Attorney's Office, Tim Ward, recognizing June as being World Elder Abuse and Dependent Adult Prevention Awareness Month. And I tell you what, it really is a very moving ceremony when they talk about the instances of abuse that do occur in our community, that are so often overlooked by our society. This was the first year they've done a formal ceremony to recognize this month. I thought it was well-attended, and it is certainly going to help draw attention to this issue. So I encourage and applaud their efforts, and hope that it continues to spread awareness and gain popularity into the future. You know, you look at so many different societies and countries throughout the world, and the elders are truly treasured. And in Tulare County, I believe, last year alone, we had over 2,700 cases of reported abuse of elders, senior citizens, and dependent adults, and it just makes your stomach turn. So I sure hope that our efforts can help combat that in the future. This morning, we had a, like Supervisor Worthley mentioned, we had a very thorough, I think is a great word to describe, the presentation we had about our strategic financing of our retirement system into the future. And I'd actually like to request our CAO to just go over briefly, because this is a much larger crowd than what we had this morning. I'd like him to go over a little bit of what he covered this morning. You know, we had three experts in the public retirement arena, in public finance arena, speak to us this morning, and basically talk about how strong our system really is. But even that being said, like Supervisor Worthley mentioned, that strength is compared to other public systems, but we still have a very significant level of unfunded liability into the future, $238 million. How do you meet that obligation going forward? We have to be creative, because every dollar, every increased dollar that goes towards retirement contributions on the employer's side is taken out of our discretionary pot of money that we can improve services, deal with salary and benefits for our employees. So this Board is really looking forward proactively, rather than reactively, as to how we can better our position into the future. So Mr. Spott, if you would just go over briefly a couple of those items and highlight for the audience that's here this evening, what you did for us, or what the presentation's covered this morning, I think that'd be, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. I will be very brief, but to provide context, could you just lower the lights, dim the lights just a little bit? Thank you. In January of this year, during the Chair State of the County address, he called for a strategic financing plan to address a number of long-term expenditures that this county will be facing. In February of this year, this Board of Supervisors directed that an ad hoc committee be established to identify or to evaluate these long-term issues. For the past two or three months, we've had three meetings. The first couple of meetings addressed financial services. The third meeting, which was held today, addresses retirement. Essentially, the retirement expenses are composed of an employer contribution and an employee contribution. At the present time, the employer's contribution is a little over 14%, and the employee's contribution is 7%. We have a 19-year layered payoff plan that has been approved by TESRA, as well as by the Board of Supervisors, to amortize or to pay down this plan. That's good, because even though we are funded at approximately 84% and compared to other counties, we are in very good shape, with relatively little debt. The practical significance, as this chart shows here, is that over time, there is going to be a significant increase in the employer's contribution in order to pay off that liability. And this year, or last year, for example, last fiscal year, the employer's contribution was about $34 million. This year's contribution will be $37 million, and then each year, it will go up several million dollars till it hits about $45 million, and then on up into the 70s. The practical significance of that, and that's why this Board and the committee needs to be complimented, is that they're not kicking this can down the road. If these spikes occur, the practical significance will be that there will be less discretionary funding for the addressing of further departmental expenses, including employees' compensation, that is salaries and benefits. So that provides the context, if you will, why this is significant over time as a matter of addressing long-term expenditures and employee compensation in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Also this week, I will be presenting to the Training and Employment Association on Thursday regarding a State of the County. And then lastly, I wanted to highlight an event that takes place on Friday in the city of Tulare, and that is the Salute to Dairy Luncheon, put on by the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. It's always a great event, well-attended, and shows the appreciation to the industry that is so vital to this county, and indirectly involved in so many jobs of residents within our county as well. So that concludes my Board of Supervisors Matters. We will now move on to item number three, which is a presentation given by Daisy Guzman of Community Services Employment Training regarding the Step Up #LEAD Program.
Good evening, everyone.
I was gonna say, that doesn't look like Suzie, right? I know that guy. I golfed with that guy in high school, and his name's not Suzie. Nice to see you come up, Cosmo.
Good evening, Chairman Vanderpool, members of the Board, Mr. Spott, Ms. Peterson, Samantha Ferrero, Board Representative. I would just like to provide a brief introduction to our presentation this evening. So let me pull it up here. Okay, good. All righty. So since taking over the Step Up program on behalf of your Board earlier this year, working with our partners at HHSA and CSSET on the #LEAD program has been thoroughly enjoyable for me. We have a great partnership between these three organizations, and we're able to provide an excellent program to youth throughout our county. So I'll just provide a little bit of numbers and history, and then get into some of the stories and the details. Daisy and Cosmo will be providing an update from this current graduating program class. The #LEAD program began in the fall of 2013. So in the graduating class of 2014, with the goal of retaining 25, we ended up retaining 26 youth out of the 32 who originally signed up. This program began just in Visalia, and the next year, we were able to expand to not only Visalia, but also to youth in Tulare. We were able to retain 46 youth out of the program. So as you can see, it's grown, as the sites have grown. In the 2015-16 program year, we were able to graduate 77 youth out of the program. At this time, we expanded to the city of Porterville, so we had three cohorts in Visalia, Tulare, and Porterville, expanding the reach of this program. Which brings us to the 2016-2017 #LEAD program. We've been able, it's really started to take off as the program and the brand has expanded throughout the county, graduating 100 students throughout these three cohorts, with our goal only being 75. So just a testament to the partnerships that we have between HHSA, excuse me, Step Up, your Board, and our wonderful partners at CSSET. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Cosmo Costalis and Daisy Guzman, who will tell you a little bit more about the ins and outs of the program. Thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpool, thank you for that warm welcome as I walked up. Good evening, distinguished officials of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. In the summer of 2013, I attended a meeting in a conference room here at the Board to join in the discussion regarding the implementation of a leadership program. What came out of that meeting is a direct result of everything that you will be witness to today. It is the collaborative vision and the responsibility that each of you possess to the communities that you represent as a Tulare County Supervisor. In essence, this is your program. I've had the privilege of being one of the coordinators of LEAD since its inception as a pilot program in November of 2013. The personal growth and opportunities that this affords our youth in Visalia, Tulare, and Porterville is invaluable. While I take every opportunity to be thankful to Health and Human Services, as well as the Board, for their generous funding that makes this program possible, as well as the support from our various community partners, I am most grateful for all of the #LEAD participants that have had the pleasure to serve over the past four years. They have shown me that they believe first and foremost in themselves, this program, their community, and possess a willingness and drive to want the best for their futures. I thank them for making my job enjoyable and fulfilling, but most of all, they have given me a reason to continue to believe in the future potential of our youth and the prosperity in our communities. Two #LEAD participants from Visalia have joined us here tonight, and you will have the opportunity to meet them shortly. With that being said, the vision of this program in 2013 was a leadership and development, leadership development and mentoring program with an emphasis on service learning, all while inspiring the students to make a difference in their community, foster civic engagement, and eventually learn the skills to mentor younger students. While doing this, we would like to engage youth in leadership activities and exposing them to post-secondary ed. The application process, this was open to all juniors and seniors within Visalia, Porterville, and Tulare Joint Union districts. We had 204 applicants this last year for 2016, 2017. We had 79 applicants from Visalia. In addition to regular high schools, it was also chartered and independent studies. We had 60 applicants from Tulare, and 65 applicants from Porterville. The interview process, everyone who applied was invited for an interview. Interviews were held at COS Visalia, COS Tulare, and Porterville College. Interview panel consisted of CSSET staff, Supervisor Cox, and Board staff, as well as additional program partners. That evening, we interviewed 135 applicants, and we made our selection of 115 to conclude, 38 in Visalia, 37 comprised Tulare, and 40 in Porterville. Incentives or opportunities, while we don't force these students to be there, if they do complete 80% active participation, there are several things that they would qualify for. The big one is the summer employment opportunity. As Sam said, this summer, we are placing close to 79 of our participants at completing the program on a paid work experience contract. Like some of our CSSET programs, this will directly coincide to their career interest. So I mean, it's all across the board, vet medicine, engineering, teaching, IT, law enforcement, just to name a few. Another incentive that we did offer and had the opportunity and funding to provide this year was scholarships for our graduating seniors. As Sam said, I believe we gave away 19 scholarships. So that was a great opportunity for our graduating seniors to help fund some of their college. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Daisy Guzman from CSSET.
Good evening, distinguished Board members. My name is Daisy Guzman, and I would like to share with you the positive impact that your program is making in Tulare County. #LEAD has a model curriculum, which is designed to prepare future Tulare County leaders by giving them the opportunity to engage with local professionals, participate in service learning, community projects, and visit college campuses. #LEAD participants have the opportunity to learn communication skills, conflict resolution, strategic planning, and so much more. Our mission is for students to leave the program with a clear set of educational and career goals. The program meets twice a month at community colleges, COS Visalia, COS Tulare, and Porterville College. Professionals from each community are invited as guest speakers to share how they've reached their dreams and goals, and also the barriers that they've had to overcome. #LEAD participants are inspired to post-secondary education, and being on campus reminds them that college is very much possible. Being able to hear from community leaders reassures them. Being able to hear from community leaders reassures them that they too can fulfill their dreams and aspirations. Before you, you see this slide with the different life skills that we offer to them. And I would like to invite Kylie and Soraya to share one of their most fond memories of the 2016-2017 cohort.
First off, thank you very much for listening about our program. It's meant a lot to Soraya and I. So my greatest memory of over the past two years, because I've had the blessing of being able to be part of this program for two years, was when the director, or rather, the Dr. Otecho, who is the Dean of Math and Sciences at COS, he came to talk to our group, and he told us about how he got to his distinguished position. I knew that he'd be talking to us about his successes and all the opportunities that he received while he was working through college and working his way up. But what really caught me off guard was when he was talking about his background. Dr. Otecho talked to us about how he had had a very rough beginning, and that through all the adversity, he was able to beat the statistic. This really stuck out to me as a foster youth in Tulare County, that I can work hard too and do whatever I want as long as I'm putting in the work. And that really inspired me and inspires me today still.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. So my favorite memory of this year was we were able to participate in the STEAM event, which was the Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, Science, and Arts program. And the main speaker that I got a big perspective out of was Eric Gonzalez, and he was the arts portion of the STEAM event. I am very involved in the performing arts, and it is something that is true to my heart. And so being able to hear him and where he's come from and the journey he's taken to get to where he is today was very touching to me, and it really hit me hard when he was speaking about it.
Also throughout this year, we were, we had the opportunity to attend a course at Fresno State as well as at UCSB. At both colleges, we were able to take a tour of the college, and I'll be talking a little bit about the Fresno State trip. At the Fresno State trip, we were able to do team building, which is where we learned how to rely on each other and as well as relying on ourselves to get the dream done. Though it was just a ropes course, and we were climbing high and learning how to swing over things, it really taught us that whatever you're working on with your team, that you can go faster by yourself, but you can go farther with a team, and just to continue working on that.
UCSB was also a great opportunity to see a beautiful campus and get a feel of the area. Since I am now a senior, these trips are, is what's gonna help me decide where I want to get my education, so that I can pursue my dream of becoming a public speaker. And so this trip was really a true opportunity to understand what it's like to be on a college campus and to get a feel of the area and how it is in the college life.
I was also inspired in this way because I will be attending Fresno State next year, and that really gave me the inspiration to see what the campus is like and to really get excited about the education I will be receiving from there. And one of the biggest things is through this program, we are able to work on a service learning project. Each year, we present to a group or to students about a project, and this year, we have the opportunity to present to the Pro Youth Heart Program in Visalia.
So I had the opportunity of leading my group, and we went to Lindwood Elementary to speak to the kids about bullying. And throughout the whole presentation, the kids were very interactive, and they really much, they enjoyed it, and I could tell that they were very excited about what was going on and what we were talking about. And at the end of the presentation, I made a point to make sure that the kids understood that being different and having different dreams than other people is okay, and I know that after leaving there, they all had a new mindset of I can do anything and become what I want to do in my life.
The past four years have been celebration after celebration. To see our Tulare County young adults becoming self-sufficient is very rewarding. This year alone, forty-nine of our students will be attending stellar California universities. Distinguished board members, thank you for being champions for our future leaders and for inspiring them to dream big, work hard, and make great things happen. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Shuckley, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you. Being my first year involved in this program, I was just overwhelmed with not only Daisy's but Cosmo, I worked mostly with Daisy, her enthusiasm, her mentorship and leadership to all these youth in this program. And I can't express how fortunate we are to have you guys, Cosmo, Daisy, and everybody else involved, have you implementing and facilitating this program for the youth. And I'd also like to thank Samantha, because she's, first year, she stepped into this, into a position that in the past was run by somebody doing this full-time, and she has just taken it by the horns and worked with Daisy and Cosmo and just made this great. And we're hoping, I'll put it out there, we're hoping to extend this program into the North County, maybe a cohort in Dinuba in the future. So I hope we can make that happen, and with folks like them leading this, I have no doubts that we will. Thank you, guys.
District One, love. Go ahead Supervisor Crocker, are you gonna make a pitch for District One?
I don't know.
Show me the money!
That was a great presentation, and thank you very much. This was a pilot program a few years ago, and clearly, it's turned from a pilot into a success story. So you should sure be proud of yourselves, and we're sure glad to make this kind of a program possible to help youth like you in our county to be successful. So, great job, great presentation, and thank you very much. Next, we're gonna move on to item number four on our agenda, which is a request to present a proclamation recognizing June of 2017 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Up here is the Chair of the 2017 Walk to End Alzheimer's. I know. Good to see you. Well, we have a proclamation proclaiming June 2017 Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Tulare County. Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia, causing problems with memory, thinking, and behavior. Symptoms develop slowly and progressively get worse over time, becoming severe enough to interfere with daily tasks. And whereas Alzheimer's is not a normal part of aging, the greatest risk factor is increasing age, and the majority of people with Alzheimer's are sixty-five and older. And whereas Alzheimer's is a progressive disease, and those diagnosed with this disease live an average of eight years after symptoms become noticeable to others. And whereas Alzheimer's is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States, and there are more than five million Americans living with the disease. And whereas everyone has at risk, has at risk to develop Alzheimer's or some other form of dementia. Alzheimer's has no current cure, but symptomatic treatments are available that can temporarily slow the progress of dementia and improve the quality of life for those with Alzheimer's and their caregivers. Research and efforts are ongoing to find a cure. Now therefore be it resolved, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim June 2017 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Tulare County, and call upon the citizens to take the opportunity to join the global conversation about Alzheimer's disease, the brain, and other dementias. And I just wanna thank you, Bob. I'm sure with all the folks in this room, I doubt there's probably just maybe a few people who this disease has not touched in some form or another. I know, I have family members and friends with family members who have been diagnosed with dementia and Alzheimer's. So thank you for the work that you do in bringing awareness to it and also raising money to hopefully find a cure for this someday. So if you'd like to say something?
Thank you, everybody, Board of Supervisors. I've been chairing the Visalia Walk to End Alzheimer's. This is my third year. The last year, we raised almost eighty thousand dollars, and this year's goal's at forty-five. And currently, I am already at forty percent of budget, which is almost twenty thousand dollars. The biggest reason I do this is to bring awareness to the Alzheimer's disease, because it is horrible, but to be able to hopefully touch an extra life, have them attend a walk which we'll have in October, and then other people can see that they're not alone. The biggest help that I need is just individuals just registering, just going to the ALZ.org page, start a team, and just start raising awareness, and together, we can make a difference. So thank you.
The Chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Approve for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Time is now seven-thirty-nine. We do have a nine, or I'm sorry, a seven-thirty timed item, which is a public hearing, a request from the Board of Supervisor staff to elect to become a groundwater sustainability agency and undertake sustainable groundwater management in the portion of the King's Sub Basin, et cetera, et cetera. I don't wanna read Denise's whole presentation.
There's only eight. I don't know.
Denise England, Water Resources Program Director for the Board of Supervisors. The item before you tonight is one of the last steps in gaining groundwater sustainability agency coverage for Tulare County. As you know, Sigma was passed by the legislature in 2014, and since then, local agencies have been working to come together and form groundwater sustainability agencies and notify the Department of Water Resources and begin work on implementing Sigma. So the item before you tonight is just to complete that and to make sure that our property owners within Tulare County are not subject to probationary status and being required by the State Water Resources Control Board to do direct reporting and pay some fees. So I'll try to be as quick as possible. I know you have a lot of things on tonight's agenda. So as you'll recall, we have three high-priority sub-basins within Tulare County, the Kings in the north, the Keweeah, and the Tulie. And in case you don't know where those are, that is where they are. And I have a couple of maps, and I'll have to, excuse me, there's not an elegant way of doing that. This first map is from the Department of Water Resources. And if I can get it to cooperate here. This map shows the GSAs that have filed for GSA status within the state. So this is Tulare County. The green is an area that has an exclusive GSA, and they're good to go. The lighter blue, which actually, this map was just updated this afternoon, because when I loaded it, it showed some different colors, but it was updated this afternoon. So this lighter blue shows that exclusive GSAs have filed, but their ninety-day noticing period has not lapsed yet. So they are, have been noticed, and they're, will assume to become exclusive. This darker purple area, and it's this color here, that's in Fresno County, that's not our problem, this indicates an overlap. And so these areas, this overlap, and these little white areas are the areas that the county is allowed to come in as a backstop to provide GSA coverage, so that on July first, they're not deemed unmanaged and then subject to those state board sanctions. Just for comparison, so the state board, we know that they've wanted for a long time to come down on folks. They're chomping at the bit to do some enforcement action. And so their map has not been updated. So on their website, they have this compliance map, and the red, as you can see on the left, it says the red are areas where either no local agency has formed, or there are GSA notifications that have not taken effect due to overlap. So you'll see here, both the greater and the mid-Keweeah are still shown as overlap, and none of their area has been deemed exclusive. And then the overlap here, some of the mapping errors you'll see here, you can see these little slivers of red. That's clearly a mapping error, we just need to clean that up. So that just illustrates the point of Tulare County needing to do something. So this is the map that our GIS department has prepared, and like I said, as of today, that little red area of overlap in between the East Keweeah and the Greater Keweeah has been resolved. So the only outstanding area of overlap is down in the South County with the Alpa GSA. And they're overlapped by the Tri-County GSA. And then there's some little areas that are not covered, but those property owners have said, I want IFARM and another GSA, and I want to be managed by that GSA. And so in the future, we will negotiate an agreement between the adjacent GSA and ourselves to get that area managed. We won't be a standalone GSA writing a GSP for any of these small little pockets. And this is really hard to read, I apologize. So this is some guidance that came out from the state board at the end of March, and it basically says, anywhere that there's overlap, it'll be deemed unmanaged on July first, and the counties are allowed to be the backstop and step up to be the GSA. But in order to do so, the counties have to go through the same process that all the other GSAs have to go through, which is to notice, hold a public hearing, and elect to become a GSA and notify the Department of Water Resources. So that gets me to my request. The first is to hold a public hearing, and then elect to become a groundwater sustainability agency and undertake sustainable groundwater management in the portion of the King's Sub Basin and the Keweeah and the Tulie Sub Basins, underlying Tulare County's boundaries, and not covered by another groundwater sustainability agency pursuant to the appropriate water code sections. And then to, within that, develop an outreach program in cooperation with another groundwater sustainability agency, direct staff to negotiate the development of groundwater sustainability plans with other GSAs, direct staff to negotiate coordination agreements with those other agencies, and then direct staff to send to the Department of Water Resources within thirty days the appropriate documentation to become a GSA. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I have received a couple of letters regarding the Alpa GSA overlap and how they would like to be managed after the county elects to become a GSA, and I know there are folks here as well to speak.
Any questions from board members?
Only question that I have is specifically related to making sure that we are in contact with all of the various GSAs that have already filed, so that we can, and one of the requests was to coordinate an outreach plan to make sure that any uncovered area is going to be addressed in the future, and that has to be done collaboratively with the GSAs that those individual landowners that are not currently covered would like to be covered by.
For the most part, those landowners reached out to us. There is one area just south of the Pixley Irrigation District that most likely will be covered by tri-counties, that's just a clump of parcels that kind of, nobody really wants it, some mobile homes and things, and so Tri-County has said that they would manage that for us. But for the most part, the uncovered areas are areas where people have reached out to us and said, don't lump me in over there, I want to be part of this. And then the mapping errors will clean up with the other GSAs. I do attend most of the GSA meetings within the county, and I attend all of the coordination meetings in each sub-basin, so.
Great. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing at this time. I will open the public hearing. I do have a public comment request form filled out by Bruce Howard to come forward and speak. And thank you for returning after your arrival at six, or I'm sorry, at three o'clock this afternoon.
I'm glad you got all the financial things resolved.
Yeah, we did.
I'm anxious to look forward to 2036 to see if you're on target. I have submitted a letter. I don't, is it necessary that I read it? Okay. My name's Bruce Howard. I'm General Manager of Alpa Irrigation District and Alpa Community Service District. To some highlights, Alpa Irrigation District has been established for a hundred and two years. It has a rich heritage in our area as an irrigation district that respects the environment and the groundwater sustainable, or GSA, and Sigma is very important to us. I do have a concern that, reading the minutes of the staff report, that it says staff is competent that unmanaged areas can be Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments related to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period, and I will bring it back to the Board for action. Discussion and/or action?
I would move approval of forming the GSA to cover those areas that are not covered or where we have the overlap and all the other requests that are set forth on the agenda item.
I have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. The motion does pass unanimously. And we will now go back to item number five, which is public comment period. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes, and under state law, there will be a total of 15 minutes allocated for the public comment period. At this time, I have a request from Sandy Lanza. Go ahead and come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and distinguished members of the Board. My name is Sandy Lanza, and I've come a long way for tonight. I come from the San Fernando Valley. I worked for the county as an administrative assistant there in the San Fernando Valley for 20 years. I'm now retired. And as you look around this room, you see a lot of purple, but I'm not here for the purple. I'm here tonight because I'm seeing red. I'm seeing red ever since I found out the unfair way that the workers of Tulare are being treated. They are not being compensated for the same work as the other counties are. They're receiving much more than these people. They pay taxes. They have families to support. They are honest, hard-working citizens and workers. And if nothing's done, you're going to lose these people, and they're going to be very hard to replace. So, I'd like you to consider that issue. Thank you.
Next, I have a request from Maisie Avila.
Good evening. My name is Maisie Avila, and I come from Kern County. As I sit here tonight and I listen to you guys talk about all the community stuff that you do, I want to leave you with a little thought, food for thought, what I like to call it. When you're considering all the things you do for the community, you need to consider the people that do the things in the day-in, the day-out, everyday operations in doing so, and not leave them out, because they're really key to your county. They're really key in the things that they do. They are very passionate. And one of the things I've noticed, I don't actually live here, I live in Kern County, but as a sister in county, more and more people need to realize the turnover in this county is astronomical. It is huge. And I strongly, strongly believe, only because you leave those folks behind. And when you leave those folks behind, you not only cause the community to suffer, you cause these employees to suffer. You keep them stuck. And when you keep them stuck, there's no movement. And you forget, we all forget sometimes, that these are the very citizens that vote each and every one of you in your seats. So, at the end of the day, if you don't have them backing you up, and they can't feel like they can trust their Board of Supervisors, and the community doesn't feel like they can support the Board of Supervisors, then this is me saying, not anybody else but me, you're holding them hostage. And I believe by law, holding people hostage is a crime. So, do right by your employees. Like I said, I don't live here in Kern County, but I sure as you understand what they're going through. And I'm trying to talk to these individuals and make sure that they stay around here for you, to make sure that the community all around, the workers and the folks that support the citizens, all the citizens in Tulare County come together and want a court. God bless you all.
Thank you for your comments. I have a request from Kathleen Wilmus.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors, my fellow workers in the public. My name is Kathleen Wilmus. I'm an SSA 2, which is a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant 2 with the Department of Health and Human Services, the Processing Center. I've worked for Tulare County for approximately 10 years. Tulare County being 55% Medi-Cal recipients, my job is pretty key, because I work in the state system for Medi-Cal that ensures that the coverages are correct, that we activate and terminate and move them within inner counties. So, I have a pretty important job. As you know, we've been at the table for a while, and we're not moving nearly far enough or fast enough in our negotiations. Every day that we continue to drag this out, we're losing experienced workers to neighboring counties such as Kern, Kings, and Fresno. I've personally seen it in my office. We're currently down three supervisors that have gone to other locations, and we just had a whole slew of new workers. 15 new workers come in, and we have approximately 12 more coming in just in our office. So, that's a lot of turnover, and it takes approximately six months to a year for a worker to get up to speed, to be really efficient at what they do, to answer the questions and serve the public properly. We're very committed to our work and our service to this community, but we're losing great people every day because the county is not investing in us. I want to keep working as hard as I do for this community and to keep delivering the services that our community needs, but I need this Board's support. Over the years, SEIU members have been understanding when money was tight and we did more with less. Now, the county has the money, and we're still cut way back. Without a change, we're going to have to do less with less, and everyone's going to suffer. Not investing in our workforce doesn't even save you that much money because of the increased turnover rates and the additional training costs. SEIU members and my coworkers want a fair settlement, a decent contract that meets the needs of the community and the workers who keep Tulare County residents healthy and safe. Even our own recipients under cash aid food stamps and Medi-Cal are getting a 3.85 cost of living increase. Our proposal is fair within the county. It's time to move forward, work together, and towards a contract to invest in quality public services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I now have a request from Jonathan Ramos.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Ramos. I'm a stock clerk one. I work for Tulare County Department of Child Support Services. And what I do is all, whenever there's a broken light, broken keyboard tray, door, anything, we're the ones that take care of that. For my coworkers here, many of them are here today. So, I'd like to take a minute, please, to speak for them, and especially for the ones that weren't able to make it here today. We brought our time, our energy, our ideas, and our lives to our jobs. We've gone above and beyond to build a relationship with this Board based on trust and mutual interest. We're now asking that you direct staff to work with us, not against us. I know that if both parties are willing, we can create an offer that is fiscally responsible and still invest properly in vital community services. Many of us have been working for the county for a long time. Boards come and go, but the services you are sworn to deliver will still be needed. We're not asking you to accept our proposal. We're asking that you champion it. We're asking that this Board lead and say, "It's time to invest in our community." This is what Tulare needs. SEIU Local 521's members employed by Tulare County are the front line of essential public services and are proud to serve our community. To do the job we all promised, we need a highly skilled workforce, improved day-to-day work efficiencies, and adequate compensation. Thank you.
All right. Next, I have a request from Rosemary Reese.
Good evening, everyone. My coworkers did a great job in speaking. I don't know if I can do as good as them, but we're all here for the same reason. My name is Rosemary Reese, and I am a child support officer, and I've worked for this county for 17 years. I was born and raised here, and I've lived in this county for 61 years. My job affects a lot of the families in every town in this county, and so, we are able to serve them, give them great customer service, fulfill needs, and especially with the children, in making sure that they have a child support order that will help them to succeed in their homes when they're separated, when families separate. I'm here today to ask you to invest in Tulare County. Anyone in business or government will tell you that cutting costs is great, as long as you cut the right costs. Some cost...some cut costs you more money than you save. We're at the point in our workforce with turnover, stress leave, and excessive workloads. The county needs workers they can't get and is having trouble retaining the ones they already have. I don't go to the public service to...I didn't go into public service to get rich or to get thank yous. We trade dreams of riches for security. Now, we're losing that, too. The county has had surplus for decades, and the cost has been carried by workers. Many can no longer afford to carry the county, and for every good person we lose, the cost of those who remain get higher. Take care of your workers so they can take care of your public, and thank you. Have a nice seat.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I have a request from Susan Gundy.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Gundy. I worked for the county from 1977 till 1998, when I was asked to retire unceremoniously. I worked my way up from an entry-level health educator to a program manager, where I wrote grants and...for millions of dollars to serve the public, and I administered...and I supervised a number of community workers throughout the county. And I want to speak on behalf of the lower-paid employees. When I was working for the county up until 1998, my supervisees had to have their children on Medi-Cal. We're talking about 20 years ago. They still, your current employees, still have to have their children on Medi-Cal. The county health insurance is not adequate to serve families. I was talking to one of the young men. His deductible is 45...and he's...his insurance is paid by the county. His copay is $45, and he doesn't know what his deductible is. That is no better than what you can get in the private market. That's not representative of what a...an employee, an employer-based health insurance should be giving. Now, the county employees are asking for a modest raise and for you to invest in them. And I would like you to look seriously at what you consider for their health insurance, because when they get a 2% or 3% increase in their salaries, where does it go a few months later to pay for their health insurance? So, you need to take that into account. Health insurance is very, very important in the current political climate. Who knows what's going to happen on...to Medi-Cal? 55% of the county, you know, residents are on Medi-Cal, and our current federal administration is looking to decrease that drastically. So, I'm hoping that even our county employees will not be losing benefits. So, please take that into account. And I do appreciate everything that the county employees do. I trained and worked with community workers throughout the whole county and other people in the WIC program and teen parenting and all of those different programs. They work very hard, and they deserve to get appropriate compensation and for you to look out for their healthcare needs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I have a request from Sam Aguilera Morello.
Thank you very much for your public service. I'm here to speak on behalf of the SEIU and the employees for our county. I'd like for you to please continue doing what you're doing and listening to everything that they bring to the table to consider as you move forward for the Contract Action Team. They're ready to negotiate. Remember that there's no resource more valuable than your employees. You need to invest in them so that they can give you back in time in huge dividends. Those are our future. They're parents of children, and we need to make sure that we take care of all of them. Thank you very much. As we go forward, please consider everything that they bring to the table.
Are there any additional public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period, and I'm going to bring it back to our regularly scheduled agenda and now take up the consent calendar, items 7 through 34. I do know that I'd like to have item 17 pulled for separate consideration and comment. Item 20 needs to be clarified by council.
Yes. Item 20 is additionally to approve two one-year extensions beyond the proposed agreement on the approval of county council.
Okay, great. And then, does the Board or a member of the public wish to remove any additional items from the consent calendar? Supervisor Crocker?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 30.
Okay, item 30 will be pulled for separate consideration. Any additional items? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the balance of consent.
Seeing none, I move for approval of the balance of consent calendar.
Second.
A motion on the balance of consent by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shuckland. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now take up item number 17. This is a request regarding the proceeds from income located at 5300 West Tulare Avenue in Visalia. Mr. Hess, if you'd like to just give a brief overview of this item, and then I have a little bit of discussion, I'm sure.
Absolutely. So, yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, the item is related to the rental income that we will be generating over at the Tulare Acres Professional Center, also known as the Sigma Building. We have met with our property management company and are projecting a rental income of 2.4 million on the higher end, on the conservative end, more $2 million next year. That is after all of our expenses, after our one-time and operational expenses. So, what this fund does is this would set aside that income in a dedicated fund for purposes to be identified by the Board, and primarily, the original intention was for improvements necessary at that building.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions or comments related to this? I know that I wanted to pull and just highlight it. I think this is a very important item for the county and shows the foresight of this Board, looking to the future, to generate money that can be used on a discretionary basis to meet future needs of the county, whatever they may be. I particularly favor seeing this designated in a fund that's going to go towards the improvement of county facilities well into the future. We need to try to protect as much revenue towards maintaining what we currently have so that we don't find ourselves in a need that we are pulling discretionary revenue from other services and projects in order to maintain our facilities. Any additional questions or comments? Supervisor Crocker?
I just...and maybe you can shed some light on this, but I want to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves as far as our ability to do something. If we create a specialized fund, you know, I understand the need to make sure that we keep and maintain good renters, leases at the site as an ongoing revenue source, but I want to make sure that we're able to do that. So, is there a possibility that we can...I don't know if there's any thoughts or something, if we...if the ability to make sure that, I think what Supervisor Vanderpoel says, was a good option as far as what we might be able to do with additional proceeds. I can't see that we would need 2.4 million or 2 million annually to make sure that we maintain that site.
Correct. That's going to be more than we need for...that is a Class A building, and so, the tenants there do have certain expectations, but that is more than we need to meet those expectations and exceed those. So, one thought that comes to mind is perhaps set an amount that we would like to meet as a reserve for that building, and then anything in excess could be used as a discretionary decision beyond that purpose, as we know we've met our reserve obligations for that property.
Sure. Go ahead.
I had a previous conversation with John about this and other revenues that we have. So, we...
Yeah, I, I just, and maybe you can shed some light on this, but I want to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves as far as our ability to do something. If we create a specialized fund, you know, I understand the need to make sure that we, we keep and maintain good renters, leases at, at the site, as a, as an ongoing revenue source, but I want to make sure that we're able to do that. So is there a possibility that we can, I don't know if there's any thoughts or something, if we, if, ability to, to make sure that, I think what Supervisor Vanderpoel says, what's a good option as far as what, what we might be able to do with additional proceeds. I can't see that we would need 2.4 million or 2 million annually to, to make sure that we maintain that site.
Correct. That's going to be more than we need for, that is a Class A building, and so the tenants there do have certain expectations, but that is more than we need to meet those expectations and exceed those. So one thought that comes to mind is perhaps set an amount that we would like to meet as a reserve for that building, and then anything in excess could be used as a discretionary decision beyond that purpose, as we know we've met our reserve obligations for that property.
Sure. Go ahead. I had a previous conversation with John about this and other revenues that we have. So we have other rental income that come to the county, but we also have expenses that go with the, with our buildings. And so it turns out that in actuality, the, if we take us out the Acres property, we actually have more expenses than income coming in to cover those other expenses. So just to put that in the process, in the proper context, and then, of course, when you have to do major projects, replacing roofs, doing parking lot, resurfacing, so forth, it could be major expenses. So I, I don't think we have to say anything. I mean, there's no constraints on this fund. So to your point, Supervisor Crocker, it's not as if we have got a constrained fund that we need to delineate what it can be used for. There are no limitations on it, so the ability of the board to come back and determine how to use these funds is wide open. So I think your, your concerns are met, I think, by the fact that this is not a dedicated asset that we have somehow put into an irretrievable trust or something like that. It's not the situation.
That's correct. It really has to do with the way fund accounting works, that the monies actually come into the property management unit in the general fund, in the general services department, and after the expenses have met, the proceeds would be transferred there. Any portion of those proceeds could be transferred to this fund, and then once in that, funds can be used for any discretionary purposes as decided by the board.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that there are no constraints on this, but I would like to see it dedicated to capital needs in general, so.
I agree with that. I agree with that. I think it's a good idea. And we have a lot of needs in this county for the buildings that we do have, and so it's good to have that money there in case we do need to fall upon it.
Correct.
And if I may say, Mr. Chair and Board members, let the resolution reflect that there are no restrictions on the dedication of the funding so that it could be used for other capital projects.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, this item is under approval. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis. A second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will take up item number thirty, I believe. Supervisor Crocker? Like this item pulled?
Good evening. Mike Washam, RMA. The, the item thirty for your consideration tonight is regarding encroachment permit, an agreement with Pixie Biogas for a regional digester project, and where they cover a number of lagoons, about eight or nine at this point, growing to maybe fifteen, and piping that methane gas over to the, the plant. We have RMA engineering staff, and we have the applicants here to ask, answer any questions that you may have, any technical questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Crocker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I guess my, my main concern or questions regarding the maintenance and monitoring of this gas line, it seems to me that a twenty-inch pipe is, is nothing to, that's, that's not necessarily small by any means. Wearing my previous hat, PG&E, we, you know, that was, that's going to be transmission-grade pipe for, for a pipe of that size, and so that generally means high pressure. And so I, I just want to make sure that if it's in the public right-of-way, if it's, if we're using it, that the public's, you know, safe, and that we've got a process, and to kind of just flesh those out. Otherwise, I think that this is a great way to reduce greenhouse gases and to utilize and help out our dairy industry. But I'd like to see what type of monitoring and, and maintenance of this, and if they have some type of maintenance program to, to maintain the line.
I, for a quick answer, I'll let them detail this, but it is, it is not a high-pressure line. It's very low pressure, and, and I'll let them give you the details.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to appear here this evening, Supervisors. My name is Lyle Slyer. I'm president of the company. We're here seeking approval, as you know, for an encroachment permit. It's a critical piece of the dairy biogas project that we are pursuing. Actually, we're up to eleven dairies right now, and, and we wouldn't be surprised in a Phase Two if that grows. This, this addresses a Sacramento directive under SB 1383, passed last September, that looks for a way to reduce short-lived climate pollutants, one of which is methane, from, from cattle, dairy operations. They end up with inadvertent anaerobic digestion. We are proposing to capture that methane which is otherwise released into the atmosphere and use it as a fuel. The pipeline that we will put in is a substantial-sized pipeline, but it is low-pressure. The entire system is low-pressure. We've gone to, to very well-qualified engineers to have that designed for us. We, as, as you will hear in a moment, our engineer from Provost and Pritchard is here, and I think she's better qualified to address this, but, but essentially what we're doing is putting in a very low-pressure pipeline. There are safeguards where we can't exceed 20 pounds. We, even the blowers that we're pushing it with can't exceed 20 pounds, and it's a, it's an 80-pound line. It's HDPE, so it's, it's relatively maintenance-free, but we do have plans for, for maintaining it nonetheless. And, and in fact, it will, of course, be tested as it's installed at 150% of its, its rating. With that in mind, I, I think I'll turn it over to the technical folks who can better address any, any specific questions.
Good.
My name's Maya Maddick. I'm with Provost and Pritchard, we're the design and engineers for this project. I think Lyle answered the question for the most part. It is, the maximum pressures will be 20 PSI, and at the tail end that we're requesting this encroachment for will be much less than that even. The HDPE pipe that we've selected is rated up to 80 PSI. Will have a depth of cover of at least four feet to prevent any damage from vehicles or agricultural activities, so it should be relatively safe. The operators will be traveling the alignment probably weekly to monitor activities out there, but there won't be any corrosion-related impacts for, to worry about with the HDPE pipe. So any specific questions? Let me know.
That answered most of it. I guess the one other point would be the gas itself. If there were to happen to be a, a dig-in, would, are there any concern about that reaching out to the public?
Yeah, so each of the dairies will be controlled through a SCADA system, so if there is a breach and methane is allowed into the atmosphere, they will be able to automatically stop all the blowing activities, and there'll be isolation valves throughout the system to, to stop that and, and deal with the issue. So there, I mean, there is potential for a breach, but we'll minimize the impacts.
Yeah, leave it to a governmental affairs rep from a utility company-turned-supervisor to ask these technical questions about a line that an engineer is designing for alternative fuel sources.
Can we put one of these pipelines in his office?
We got a lot of, there's a lot of gas though.
Thank you. We appreciate the clarification. Any additional questions or comments, Supervisors?
Make a motion?
If not, I have a motion from Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Worley. Those, all, everybody please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we're going to move on to item number thirty-five on our agenda, which is a request from the Registrar of Voters to approve a personnel resolution to increase the position allocation of the Registrar of Voters Department by adding one full-time equivalent Department Secretary.
Hi, Sophia Monza, Deputy CAO. Michelle Baldwin, Registrar of Voter, asked me to speak on this item for her. She was unable to attend as she has the election going on. So with the re, with the Registrar of Voters being created and is a new department in December, she has gone through a process of looking at staffing needs, and this is one of the positions she has expressed to us that she fully needs, is one Department Secretary to help her manage her future reorganizational goals.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from board members, members of the public? Seeing none, the chair will entertain.
Boot for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shuckley, and please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, you can pass on our congratulations to Ms. Baldwin, when you get a chance, as she has a break from tonight's busy election. Next up, we will now take up item, or, item number thirty-six on our agenda, which is a request to receive a presentation from the General Services Department regarding the Parks and Recreation Strategic Business Plan. Mr. Hess.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, Deputy CAO, General Services, Capital Projects. Let me get this going. Right. So this presentation is regarding the Tarrary County Parks and Recreation Strategic Business Plan. So the presentation will include a couple of different sections. First, introduction and background. Second, a look at the budget. Three, those solutions that we have in place and have been utilizing in the parks the last year or two. Fourth, those proposed actions we're asking to move forward with as part of the plan. And then finally, the specific formal requested action, the actual resolution. So as an overview, there are ten county parks owned and operated by the county, which total six hundred and twenty-eight acres of park space. There's $2 million in the budget this year approximately for parks' operation and maintenance, which includes 27 full-time employees. It's managed by the County Administrative Office since 2010. The, in 2015, the board established a Parks Advisory Committee, and the board also in that same year adopted the 20-year Mooney Grove Master, Conceptual Master Plan. So before we get into too many details, I wanted to spend just a quick slide talking about those things that have provided operational impacts to the park and our ability to address our needs and operational needs at the parks. So first and foremost is the severe drought conditions. You can see a picture there of, of an oak tree that has been impacted by that. Our irrigation, available groundwater has been severely impacted, which has also, which has led to tree loss, and then, of course, tree mortality being a major phenomenon going on in the, in the mountain areas has specifically targeted Balch Park. In addition to that, and I have a slide more specifically in this regard, that the global financial recession constrained the resources available to park staff for several years. All three of these things compounded to create a significant backlog of deferred maintenance in the parks, much of which we're still trying to address right now, and our last, our efforts over the last few years have been strategically designed to address, and have also motivated the recommendations included in this planned document. So to that end, I want to put the recommendations up front, so we talk, I can mention them here, as well as summarize them at the end. First is to establish an annual maintenance and improvement program, mentioning Capital Projects earlier. We do a capital improvement plan every year, a CIP, taking that same principle and applying it to the parks, where we, a document that would organize and outline the project priorities across all ten parks, to be reviewed by the Parks Committee and then adopted by the board annually. So in essence, it would be a proactive way to address the projects on a prioritized basis, really thinking strategically about how we want to invest our resources, which are limited here in the park system. Second recommendation included in the plan is to evaluate the availability of one-time project funding on an annual basis. This is a major help to the, the park system, either through grants, other partnerships, through capital, whatever that case may be, that we can get one-time money for one-time needs in the park system makes a big difference for us. Third, increasing public engagement outreach initiated primarily by the Parks Advisory Committee a couple of years ago. We'd like to expand and broaden that, and do some targeted community meetings throughout the counties, particularly with respect to what needs do the communities where we have parks have for those parks. And then finally, the final recommendation of the plan is to improve our customer service efforts. One of the staff, when we were looking at the plan and going through the various different analytics of it, said that any training is good training, and I think that's kind of the, the effort there, is that our frontline staff, our parks staff are frontline folks with the direct public, and making sure that those interactions are positive at all times would be our goal. So the slide here is the slide that I mentioned earlier with respect to the impacts of the financial recession on the available resources at the parks. What this is, every year, every bar there is the amount of expenditures that were available, the actual expenditures given in that, that year for the park system. So the blue year being our benchmark year in 2009, you can see in the orange years, the recession draw, took us down, and then we started to dig back out, out of that, and the last three years have been significantly above that, although they've been flat themselves. So those three years, we were limited with respect to the amount of expansion, improvement projects we could accomplish, and so there were definitely some deferred and backlog maintenance issues during those, those years, which we are now really starting to address in earnest. So some of the fiscal impacts, as mentioned, is the recession. In addition, our revenues that we generate are very, they're a small portion of our overall expenditure picture. So the expenditure picture for the parks is about $2,051,000, and that, those are actual figures for 2015, 16. In that same year, from all sources of revenues, we generated $286,000 of revenue, so you can see the gap there is very large. For just fee-based revenues, those revenues based off of fees, which I have a slide on in a moment, we only generated 11% of our expenses. So that, looking at it this way, for every dollar that we spend, 11 cents of that dollar was, was recovered through fee-based revenue, so it's a big gap. That gap, the fees really quickly are only collected Friday, Saturday, Sundays through Monday, March through October. The primary reason being that on other days of the week and other months of the year, we probably would not recoup our costs that it would take to collect those fees. It would cause, the, the fees generation being so low, it would cost us more to collect them than it would be worth. So what this picture means is that the general fund is the primary source of contribution of funding for the park system, at 86% of our overall expenses in fiscal year 15, 16. The final one that I'll mention is volunteer donations and events. They're small, only about 3% of our overall expenses are covered by those, those revenue sources. Digging a little bit deeper into the budget analysis, you can see the expenses by parks shown on the pie chart on the right. Ninety-five percent of our overall expenses are constituted by five parks: Mooney, Bartlett, Pixley, Cutler, and Balch, with Mooney, of course, being the largest, at 58% of all expenditures in the park system going to Mooney Grove. What we want to do is part of the, in concert with the Maintenance and Improvement Program recommendation, is to improve our tracking system associated with the parks, so that there's a greater ability to report on that, provide accountability and transparency for the way the money is being spent. Similarly, on the revenue picture, in this case, little bit different, five parks, but five parks constitute 99% of the revenues, primarily because there are several parks that don't, we don't have any fees at all. There's no fee collection conducted at those parks. Forty-one percent of all the revenues are from Mooney Grove, and again, we'd like to improve our tracking system as part of this effort for the revenues as well.
John, one question quick. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Kings River, 13%. Where does the revenue come from for Kings River? Well, that's, that's your, yeah, that's, that's revenue.
Yes, so Kings River, we actually have disc golf memberships that are sold there that generate revenue for us, and some people, there's an, there's an honor system up there with a box to, to pay an entrance fee to use.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah. I think 13% would probably be about 20-some thousand dollars. So it's, it's a large, you know, the percentage is sizable for that park, but not a large amount of money. And also, duff hunting, as Neil says. So revenue generated by users primarily from entrance camping and reservation fees. Of that 286,000 revenue, 235 of that came from revenues from these sources. The fee structure is shown on the right there. We are not recommending changes this time, nor have we done any analysis in that regard, and so that's, those are the fees at this time, and have been for some time. So all of this, again, means the general fund is the primary source of our, of our funding. This chart shows the general fund contribution over the last five years, and the other revenue sources, as mentioned earlier, are small at 3%, and friends at Tarrary County, donations, adopt and arbor, and special events constitute those, those funding sources. So that's a look at the, the budget picture. Now looking at those items that we've had in place over the last few years with respect to maintaining the parks. Parks Advisory Committee, Mooney Grove improvements, we've expanded and broadened our county funding partnerships. We've been working extensively with the Film Commission and Tourism Office, and then we have conservation efforts, and I have a little more info on each one here. So as mentioned, as part of our community outreach and engagement process, the board adopted the, or established the Parks Advisory Committee a few years ago. Seven-member body, one from each of the supervisory districts, and then two ex officio members, the President of the Tarrary County Historical Society and the Parks and Recreation Manager. The mission, of course, is to solicit community input and create a forum for public comments. One example of many is the, they took a very active role in vetting and reviewing the Visalia Feral Cat Coalition's Trap New to Return Program, which was ultimately brought on recommendation of the committee to your board last year for approval. In addition to that, that outreach effort, we also have community local support in the form of working with the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program. We've worked with the Young Men's Initiative in, in Cutler for Leadbetter Park, as well as in Leadbetter and at Cutler Parks. We've also partnered with other community organizations for arbor improvements. Finally, we received regular donations from service clubs for arbors, and they get to put their names on it and get to sponsor it and that sort of thing, so it's a good, it's a, it's a good program to establish relationships in the community. Mooney Grove specifically has had several amount of different items of attention over the last couple of years. First, as mentioned previously, the 20-year Conceptual Master Plan approved by the board in 2015. That effort included extensive public outreach held here in Visalia at Cafe 210, and resulted in the board adopting it and directing the Parks Advisory Committee to look at exploring the implementing of that plan. Capital Projects completed a new well which allowed parks to Capital Projects completed a new well, which allowed parks to increase their irrigation back in 2016, that's last year. Park staff has significantly increased their geese and pond cleanup efforts. As mentioned earlier, the TNR program's been in place for a year. Staff has been conducting a strategic tree removal effort there and looking at those high-hazard trees that are of great liability and risk to the county. All of that program is reviewed by a third-party entity before anything is done. We are looking at bringing a fish stocking program into the pond at Mooney Grove to just have another recreation opportunity for, for people to visit. And finally, we continue to coordinate closely with the museum and the museum board. So county funding partnerships, we've broadened our, our efforts in this regard, and particularly Resource Management Agency have really brought in, they've been very successful in, in applying for and obtaining grants for improvements at the parks. One of the most successful programs has been the Housing Related Parks Program with respect to Leadbetter Park. You see a picture there of the playground equipment that was installed. Earlier this year, RMA submitted a first-five application for playground equipment. Last year, RMA submitted an application for a soccer ground at Pixley Park. As mentioned, Capital Projects has been assisting parks on their various needs, first at Mooney Grove, and now we're in the process of, of completing a well at Cutler. And of course, we always look to make sure we're partnering with HSA and making sure we have public health and healthier lifestyles incorporated into our parks, as that's a, a major desire of the public there. So other activities and improvements that we have going on, as mentioned earlier, the Film Commission and Tourism has been a fantastic partner of the park. They have, over the last couple of years, let's say three to five years perhaps, we've done an extensive amount of filming at Balch Park in particular, resulting in forty-five thousand dollars at least in contributions to the Friends of Tulare County on behalf of the parks to be used for parks' needs. One of the most notable filming productions that was up there is the final episode of the True Detective, season two, and there's a, there's an image there from that, you can see Balch Park there in that image. In addition, we also have conservation efforts that we've been undertaking. We have partnered with TID for Groundwater Recharge Basin at Mooney, at the park. Right now, it's probably sixteen feet deep with water. It's, it's just filled up to the top right now with water. The Tree Mortality Task Force, Balch Park has been an important partner of that as well, and that's undertaken as well by RMA. So kind of circling back to the proposed actions, that gives you a picture of our budget, the, how that, the various different resources, how that works with our revenues, the actions that we've been taking place over the last couple of years. That, that is how we came to these conclusions based off of these proposed actions included in the planned document, which the document, of course, spells out in more detail. First, again, is the establishment of an annual maintenance and improvement program. This is, it would be a long-range planning tool to identify immediate needs, as well as planning for major improvements in projects within the parks, looking at things proactively. How, before we go in and conduct maintenance efforts and improvement efforts, what, how should we prioritize those efforts to begin with? Second is evaluating the availability of one-time project funds on an annual basis from whatever sources we can partner with. Three, increasing community involvement, again, expanding and maintaining our public support. And finally, improving customer service, which could include customer service training, as well as perhaps surveys to customers to see where we can improve, improving our website and making our website available for online reservations to kind of improve access to folks to make their reservations a little more conveniently. So with that, we, we believe the recommendations of the plan are designed to join responsiveness to current operational conditions right now, as well as long-range strategic planning for improvement. So we're hoping to maximize the, the funds we have, so that we can get the most out of them by thinking about our needs now in concert with the long-term plan. We also believe that park staff are prepared and enthusiastic about the ability to improve and enhance the park system, and the recommendations put forth in this document, the actions already in place, will ensure positive growth for the park system, hopefully for years to come. So the formal requested actions are as follows. First, receive this presentation regarding the plan. Second, direct staff to implement the four recommendations included in the plan. And three, as necessary or as identified tonight, direct staff to return with any relevant reports, information, or future actions based on the information included in the plan and the presentation materials. So with that, if Mr., the Chairman of the Parks Advisory Committee, Mike Crisman, is here, he may want to come and speak for a few words here. While he's doing that, I'm going to, on the, on the screen here, so I don't know if you want to put maybe half-lights up for that, I'll have a video that HSA put together of all, of five of our parks, and I'll just have that playing on the loop up there.
Don't let that distract you, Mike.
Okay. What, the blinking lights? All right, thanks. Thank you. First of all, let me say it's a pleasure to serve with the other members of the Parks Advisory Committee. You all have appointed excellent people who are taking our job seriously. And since we've been in place since 2015, essentially, we've met, we've gotten ourselves up to speed on some of the issues surrounding parks and parks management. All of that, of course, John just covered. Our goal really is to be your interface, be the people's interface with the public on, on, on relevant park efforts, relevant park concerns and issues. One of the things we're going to be doing here in the, in the very near future, begin some public outreach programs, going out. We have visited a number, some, number of the county parks, but more importantly, take this strategic plan, take it out, do some listening to some of the people in the communities. Take a look at the twenty-year master plan of Mooney Grove. Help, I think we all know that you got, you folks booted on all of them, but essentially, it's a wish list, and for us, it has to, we, we have, it's, we think it's our responsibility to come back to you with some very, with some, with some recommendations that are real, that are, that are manageable and are achievable over a period of time and still meet the public needs. So we're gonna, we're gonna be spending some time out, listening to folks, and then we will ultimately bring back a report to you for the, for that, for that work that we're doing, so. Thank you for this opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mike. You have anything else, John, or?
Nope.
Should I open up for any public comment for this evening, related to this item?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question while the speaker's coming up, but John, I remember, I believe it was two years ago, that we had allocated funding to do some emergency sort of things, where replacement, fixing broken barbecues, some of the seating support. Did those things get completed, or did they get set aside because of some of the more emergent items?
Those were completed. We went and did the benches, we did the barbecues, and, as well as the tables.
I, I believe we had allocated something like neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars for that.
Yes, we have, in the Capital Projects Fund, that's how we've also been able to address the wells. We have funds there, and that's where that fund, those funds were put on, in that account, so they would carry from year to year for that project as they were spent.
Thank you.
Sir Rogers, how are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you for recognizing me. I didn't realize. Is that notorious? John, how are you? I, I live out by the park, and it's been part of my passion and concern, and I don't know if Mr. Worthley remembers or not, but we were at a meeting that was the genesis for the start of this commission. John Hess is a good man, he's a good friend of mine. It makes the hair on the back of my head stand up when you attribute, well, the park was impacted by the drought. Well, the park was impacted by the drought because well went dry, wasn't repaired for, pick a number. I think it was two and a half years. Mr. Pillagarda owned it up to eighteen months. I guess my point is, is the county has done a poor job of maintaining Mooney's Grove, a horrible job. Mike, one time in a visit with me, called it an embarrassment, and I think he was right. And I, there are a lot of things in that twenty-year plan that I think we could get behind and maybe, you know, help institute, but I want to see the park fixed up first. I want to see the lake cleaned. I want to see the, I'm not sure all the barbecue pits and all that are repaired. I'm not sure that's the biggest deal out there, but there are, there are several old rock-built drinking fountains. None of them work, not one. Things that are repaired are repaired in sort of a shoddy, slipshod manner, in, in my opinion. I think the people that worked with that park forty, fifty years ago would be aghast at some of the things that, that in the name of repair that were done. Just one example, chopping the end off of that brick entryway there to make room for that parking lot. I don't know who thought of that, but it's, it's atrocious. That was an old historic deal that was built by rocks hauled down in a wagon, and they just chopped the end off of it and called it fine. There's a lot of things in there that, as I said, I could get behind, and somebody called me a broken record one time. They need to fix the park. If you want to, there's things in that twenty-year plan I'm gonna adamantly oppose. Change it around to a walkway. People drive through there. I drove my ninety-year-old dad through there. How's he gonna use a walkway? Things, things like that, tearing down that fish pond. I think the Okies built that fish pond, some of my ancestors. I don't want it torn down. It, it was, it's in the shape it's in because it was neglected. And to me, it's burying the evidence. Fix it. You know, get us an estimate besides an arm and a leg, which is what I normally hear from the park superintendent when I ask what something's gonna cost, and maybe we can dig up an arm and a leg somewhere to fix it. But fix it, don't tear it down. And don't, don't tear down a, a wing of that old library because the roof leaks. How many of us would tear down part of the library because the roof leaks? Or part of our house because the roof leaks? Things like that, that just, I try to be as calm as I can, as Mike knows, I'm a little volatile and maybe a little, little bit past center when it comes to maintaining good judgment, but things like that just, just make me nuts. Some of them are so logical. Want to change the entry, fine. I don't care if you change the entry, move it around to Avenue Two, whatever it is, that, that's fine, but don't tear down those, those, those rock walls there. And put some decent gates up there, just little things that could be done if we had some vision, if we had some thinking, and if we did it. And the twenty-year plan has been, in my opinion, a big distraction. Every time we start talking about we're gonna do well now with the twenty-year plan, well, part of that twenty-year plan is right out of Agenda Twenty-One, calls for pushing all the cars out of the middle of the park. And where are you gonna put them? You know, unless you can buy more land around there, you've laid as much payment as I want to see laid out there, too much, in my opinion. Don't pave over Paradise and put up a parking lot for those of you in the, Mike remembers.
That'd be a good song, John. He's thinking about maybe getting into the song.
And honestly, I feel like Mike remembers. The rest of you, I'll tell you later. But those are the things that are, that are being done there, and it's the reason we're angry.
And I, I can totally sense your, your passion, John, and I just want to tell you real quick that it was Supervisor Shuckley that gave guidance to chop that wall down today.
Yeah, you know better, John.
Well, if that's, if that's the case, I want my contribution back. Both of them.
Okay.
All seventeen dollars of it.
But, but thank you, though, John. Your, your, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we appreciate your comments, and I let you go a little long, because I know you're really passionate about this, and, and I want you to have your time in, in the spotlight, John. Is there anybody else wishing to speak under public comment related to this item? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the Board for questions and comments. Supervisor Shuckley.
My first question, John, can we get an actual cost, other than an arm and a leg, to find out how much that fish pond would cost to repair?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's, let's start with that, among many other things.
I'd be happy to meet with Mr. Rogers again. I met with him sometime to go out on the, on site of the park and went through some of those concerns he had, and actually, that conversation is what led to the kind of development of that maintenance and improvement program concept, that knowing what we need to do and being organized about it and addressing it in a prioritized fashion, which also is a way to maximize, again, the utilization of our funds. So it's, it makes sense on a, on a variety of levels, so absolutely.
There's no doubt that there's been some neglect and deferred maintenance, and at the forum, you know, Mr. Crisman put it out there, I think, the best that, that's true, what's happened, but let's, let's move forward, and, you know, thankfully, we had a good wet year, so as far as that part of, of the park looking a little bit better, we've gone in there and done some stuff to the trees. Personally, at first, I was like, oh my God, what happened to those trees? And now they're filling in, and I'm feeling a little bit better about that. It's, it's looking better. I like the plan as far as, you know, stocking the pond with fish, although I will say that the other day when I was there on KMPH, there is a no fishing sign on the island that we'll have to remove, should we decide to do that. But, you know, I look forward to work and continuing to work with the Parks Advisory Committee and with, with the outreach program, and again, you know, we've done a lot of outreach. I was on the original, I participated in the original Mooney Grove plan, the twenty-year plan, and then I know it's been revised, so let's not keep revising, revising to where we, we end up doing nothing because we're too busy revising. So let's keep on top of it.
Yep.
Okay?
Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you for the report, and I, I, earlier today, I've, it was timely that we had a discussion this morning regarding our retirement system. I'm meeting with the retirement board tomorrow, and now we're having a discussion on parks, and we're going to visit some of the parks on Thursday, so thank you for that and the report. I will say, one, one of the things that I, that I saw was kind of missing in this report is we talk about existing parks, and I know that the county has a long history of partnering with school districts and special districts on creating additional open space in, in our unincorporated communities, and so I would just encourage our, our Parks Department and General Services to make sure that we continue to seek those opportunities. I think there, you know, we've, you know, just in this, this past year since I've been here, we had a great partnership with Cutler Arosi Joint Unified, where, where RMA was able to, to help out with the grant application, and, and what's happening at Early Mart, I think, is, is another fantastic partnership, where, where it's not necessarily our facility that we're owned, but I think it's, it's, it's a way that we can really leverage taxpayer dollars and make sure that we provide a vital resource, and so I just encourage staff to continue to, to seek out those opportunities for other communities that, that need some green space.
That was brought up during the forum that we were, we attended maybe a month ago or so, and that was exactly how we described the model in the last several years, has been, to partner with community organizations that have some sort of institution, either a CSD or a school in place that can take over the, the maintenance obligations for that park, and we can help them get it up and going and get them either equipment or do the grant application, whatever the case may be. So it's a model that's been working fairly well for us over the last ten years or so. Cutler Arosi, Early Mart, Plainview, Goshen, those are some illustrations of that.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I, I do share some of John's frustrations in the sense that we have done a bad job in terms of the deferred maintenance, and we recognized that two, three years ago. Part of the problem I see is that we've had to deal with some rather major issues. I remember there was a huge electrical problem at Bartlett Park and, and Porterville. We put in two different wells, and so, in a sense, those are not a lot of things that, that the public can see right off, I mean, they're infrastructural type things, but they're big dollar amounts. My hope is we can now sort of move, and I mean, this is where the, I, I appreciate the work of the group that's formed to, to, you know, come up with the concepts and prioritizing. I hope we can move to the, more of the aesthetics, small things, like getting drinking fountains going again and so forth. Maybe they're not so small, but they're certainly not putting in wells, and, you know, they're not huge expenses, but they have so much meaning to the public. I mean, if you go up to a, a drinking fountain and you get no water out of it, it's, you know, it's, it's frustrating, and it needs to be fixed. It's not something, I mean, I, I don't want to just get caught up in a process where it's process, process, process. I mean, it needs to get to an end result quickly, you know, as quickly as possible. And I realize we, nothing happens tomorrow, but, but we need to move expeditiously to address these issues. And, and some of them are small like that. Like I said, drinking fountains, that's, in my mind, we're not here today to tell you, do this, do that. That's really what the group is to come back with the prioritizing, but just to give our input here today, I would put the fish pond at, not the fir, first part, because it's gonna be expensive, whereas drinking fountains affect everybody that comes to the park and they look for a drink of water. To me, that would be a higher priority. But again, it's not really for us to make that determination today, because we're not looking at the whole picture. That's really what this group is designed to do, to come back with recommendations to us. But I really do hope they can move along quickly, and we can move this along, and I, you know, I, when I look back, and I know, and I, I think I commented before, we've had our Capital Projects Department for some time, and our focus has always been on buildings. We really neglected our parks. We didn't even look at them. I mean, it took the group really to kind of bring us to our attention and to point out, hey, your parks are part of your capital projects, they need to be part of the funding. And, you know, we are addressing that now, but like I say, let's move along as expeditiously as possible so we can, you know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm old enough to remember those great days at Mooney's Grove. I mean, that was the big thing for third and fourth quarters of Muntz-Tolton School, you went to Mooney's Grove, you know, and I had measles one day and I missed one year, so I'm still pining over that, but, but I remember, you know, I remember.
Those stories from the eighteen hundreds keep in your mind.
The wagon train broke down, but the, you know, the, the boats and all those great But the, you know, the boats and all those great memories we have out there. And I realize we're not going to go back to a little zoo and all that kind of stuff because times have changed. But nonetheless, you know, that park is very special. And then I want to make a point that our chairman's often made, it's not our only park. And we do have other parks, we have other responsibilities, and we can't just devote all of our funds to Moonee, although it is obviously a crown jewel in our park system. But that concept I'm, I think, laying out here is something which I think is important to all our parks. You know, what can we quickly do to get the biggest thing for the buck and the most impact to our constituents? I think that's important.
Well, and not to beat a dead horse or anything, but I do want to just say that I appreciate the efforts of individuals concerned about our parks several years ago to bring these concerns to the forefront that really served as the impetus to create the Parks Advisory Committee. And while things aren't happening maybe as quickly as we would like, there are constraints within which we must operate. But I will say, I do think that the Parks Advisory Committee has served a great purpose. And our parks today are sure as hell a lot better than the park conditions were when we had that lunch with the concerned group. And I think even John would agree with that comment, right, Mr. Rogers? But there's definite room for improvement. I agree with Steve prioritizing the things that affect the most people. But I think a very important part of this vetting is the continued involvement and utilization of the Parks Advisory Committee. And a constant reminder to that committee that there are multiple parks in this county and that we do need to plan for all of them so that they can serve the constituencies they're intended to. And so I would just make that comment. Sure, Supervisor Shucklin, another bite at the apple, go for it.
Also at the forum, it was brought up with Visalia City Councilman Collins about the city taking over the parks. And I jokingly handed him my keys. I'm not ready to hand our keys to the park, to the city of Visalia. I know that's something they're going to be talking about. I'm certainly willing to listen to see, you know, maybe there is some type of collaboration since the park is within the city limits, but I'm not ready to give up on Moonee Grove and just hand it over, so.
Well, if I might just...
Ah, you opened up a can of worms.
What I want to say is, to me, I see that as an opportunity. And it's not about handing keys over one way or the other. It's about collaborating.
Collaborating, exactly.
Because if there's some funding that can come from the city of Visalia and funding from the county of Tulare to really improve the park, we can do more together than we could ever do individually alone. So I think there's some real opportunity to continue that conversation.
All right.
And then when you talk about Moonee Grove Park, I can remember the old Bartlett Park. It's at the bottom of the lake.
We're not resurrecting it.
I know that, but I'll tell you, it's not the same. I mean, you can go to the new Bartlett Park, but it's not the old Bartlett Park. So I can understand, people don't want to lose these older antiques that are in there. Let's just make them keep on working for us. That's part of, I think that's the message I'm hearing. Don't destroy what's there, let's just make do and make it work.
That mean you're going to run for reelection then?
I was just going to say, so no more Shucklin, make the executive decision to tear down the historic walls at Moonee Grove.
We get a baby crock.
No further questions or comments? I think that the board has given a pretty good direction for the implementation of this plan.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it, John. Appreciate all your dedication.
I'm not going far, I've got the next one up here, so.
All right, next, we're going to move on to item 37, which is a request from the General Services Department to approve and award the contract for the Central Yard Well Project, the lowest responsible bidder.
We need to take action on that last time, right?
We gave direction.
Oh, okay.
We gave direction on that.
I think that actually has...
We see the request.
Business plan.
Okay, so it was just...
Move.
Okay. Well, then back to that item and take action real quick. We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please vote. Good catch, Worley, thank you. All right, we will now move on to item 37, which is a request from the General Services Department to approve and award the contract for the Central Yard Well Project, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spott, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, W. C. A. O., General Services Capital Projects. So this matter is the consideration of a contract to, as you say, to install a well at the Central Yard Facility on Avenue 256. This matter was brought before the board, if you recall, back in March. There were some protests on that. We advised and requested to re-advertise. That was done. The bids were opened about a month ago in May and five bidders, the lowest bidder was $1,550,000 on about a $1.8 million engineer's estimate, so strongly below the engineer's estimate. The second lowest bidder, and the lowest bidder was Willetts Construction. The second lowest bidder, Bruff Construction, submitted a protest on the grounds that the lowest bidder, that is Willetts, had two subcontractors, which were appropriately disclosed through the bid forms as required in the specification documents, that one of those subcontractors did not list their DIR number and their DIR number was not actually valid that day. When we conducted our due diligence process the next day, on May 5th, the day after the bids were opened, they had a valid DIR number. And so the bid documents themselves allow for the board to waive technical irregularities, which we would characterize this as. It does not impact any of the team, the subcontractor or the prime contractor's ability to complete this project. And so we would definitely ask to waive that irregularity and proceed with awarding it to Willetts Equipment.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Crocker?
I met with Ellie Cook, with the Ag Commissioner, several months ago. And at the time, they expressed some, just some questions and concerns about what was going to happen at the Central Yard. And so I just asked the staff, as we reach major milestones and as we go through the planning process, that we communicate with our neighbors, they're a large business in our county and do a lot of good work. And so we want to make sure that we're good neighbors.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments from board members or members of the public?
Move for approval, Crocker.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That does conclude our, we do, that's what I'm saying, conclude our regularly scheduled agenda, but we are taking up an addendum. At this time, we have Addendum Items 1 and 2. We will take up item number 1, which is a request from the Human Resources Development Department...
Look at Rhonda.
To approve tentative agreement and authorize such changes.
Need a box?
I got some phone books back here.
There you go.
Have some blocks for your shoes if you'd like, too. That's how I reach the pedo.
Good evening. Not only can I not see above the...
You can put down that computer screen, too, if you're having trouble seeing.
The podium. I don't talk as fast and I'm not an auctioneer like John Hess. So I know the hour is late, but I have two very important items to discuss this evening. The first item being adoption of the proposed tentative agreement with the Professional Law Enforcement Managers Association, known as PLIMA. And I'm asking the board to approve the TA or tentative agreement that's attached and authorize changes to the Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Tulare and PLIMA Bargaining Unit 14. We began negotiations in the March-April timeframes with all of our bargaining associations this year. I'm happy to say that PLIMA came to the table with a very professional approach and ready for positive discussions at our negotiations table. And they have taken a leadership role in being the first to agree with the county and to come forward towards a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. This is for a two-year agreement from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. It proposes a 3% salary increase in the first year of the agreement and a 3% salary increase in the second year of the agreement. It also provides for, the county will provide for, the minimum benefit amount for both health plan years 2018 and 19. It continues our sick leave buyback program. A new benefit that was negotiated with PLIMA is the county contribution for deferred compensation, where the county matches basically 25 cents for every dollar that the employee puts into deferred comp, up to a total match of $1,500 by the county and up to the $6,000 put forth by the employee. This has been a benefit provided only to unrepresented employees in the past and is a new benefit that was negotiated with PLIMA. Provisions of a new MOU would provide for an increase in the uniform allowance by $150, going from $700 to $850 annually, effective with adoption of the MOU. Other provisions included policies by the IT Department, our theft and mobile device policy that we are rolling out to all county departments. We had revisions to our personnel rules and also revisions to our employee relations policy. And finally, we have put in our tentative agreement and into the new MOU, a reopener regarding changes to our employee health plan and other benefits in terms of cash out and cash in lieu, as it relates to the Flores versus City of San Gabriel case. The cost estimate of the salary and compensation increases is approximately $312,000 over the two-year agreement. If approved, the cost increases will be accounted for in the departmental budgets for fiscal year 2017-18 and 2018-19. That $312,000 equates or reflects changes to the salary, the sick leave buyback, the uniform allowance, and the deferred comp match that we are estimating. I'd like to acknowledge and commend the PLIMA negotiations team and they are here this evening, waiting patiently in the back. And that is Lieutenant Cory Jones, Captain Wenzinger, Lieutenant Stito, and Lieutenant Cornet. For the county, our team consisted of Attorney Shaleen Bennett, Under Sheriff Robin Skiles, Eric Martin from Human Resources and Development, and myself. I'm prepared to answer any questions, if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from board members or members of the public?
No questions, but I'd move for approval.
All right, I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you.
A second by Supervisor Shucklin, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now take up item number 2 on our addendum this evening, a request from Human Resources and Development Department to approve the tentative agreement with the Tulare County Corrections Association.
This is similar to the previous item. It deals with the TCCA, Tulare County Corrections Association Bargaining Unit 12. There's 277 allocated positions, that's our deputy probation officers, probation correctional officers, and detention services officers in this bargaining unit. We reached a tentative agreement and it was ratified by TCCA for a term of two years, a salary increase of 3% in the first year of the agreement and 3% in the second year of the agreement, the continuation of the sick leave buyback program, a change in the shift differential pay, increasing the shift differential from 4% to 6%, and increasing the number of hours required to earn the differential from six hours during an eight-hour shift. Uniform allowance is an increase by $100, with the uniform allowance going from $400 to $500 annually for all classifications in the unit, and the addition of a boot allowance for the deputy probation officers in the amount of $150 annually. Provisions of this MOU would also provide for the IT policies, revisions of the personnel rules, revisions to the employee relations plan. The employee benefit plan would provide for coverage of the minimum benefit amount and also would increase dependent coverage by $20 per pay period for employees with spouse, employees with child, and employees plus family coverage, effective with our 2018 health plan year, which begins January 1st. County contribution to deferred compensation plan, this is again a new benefit for TCCA and as well as a reopener language on cash-in lieu related to the Flores case. The fiscal impact is $1.2 million over the two-year agreement and that covers the uniform allowance, sick leave, county contribution for deferred comp, COLA, our salary increase, as well as the change in the shift coverage. I request approval for this item.
Okay, Supervisor Worley?
I do have a question, Rhonda, regarding the deferred comp, because that is an optional plan, obviously, people can choose to elect to do that or not. So how do we calculate that when you say that this will cost the county X number of dollars?
We took a look or based our estimates on how many are currently participating in each of the bargaining units and took that as a base.
So it's an approximation based upon history of other...
And we hope, frankly, we hope that by the match, that it will encourage our employees to participate, some who have not participated before, and others to participate or increase their participation. Because it is, you know, tax-deferred money that the county is providing to employees.
Thanks. Any additional questions or comments from board members, members of the public? Okay, seeing no comments, I will bring it back to the board for action. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That does conclude our regularly scheduled agenda plus our addendum. And thank you for attending Tulare County's longest night meeting ever.
And if I could just clarify the record?
And real quick, I do have clarification for the record regarding closed session from our council.
Yes, Items A and B are off calendar.
Okay. I take, we have no further need for closed session as we convene at 3 o'clock for that. Thank you for attending, drive safely and have a wonderful evening. And get to sleep.
Get to bed and come back tomorrow.